Good evening, everyone. It is April sixteenth, seven o'clock. It is time to start the first Selectman and Board of Selectment meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies for those watching that we started a little bit late. All right, I need the approval at the minutes. We had a couple over the last couple of weeks going through the budget season. We can approve them all at once, so we can do one at a time. What does the board wish to do?
I've read through them all. I have no problem proving all at once.
March twenty-fifth meeting, I believe it was, I had sent it by email, but I was told it would have to be corrected at the meeting.
Okay, what correction do you have?
Yes, I have to go back. It was comments that I made. It had to do with a percentage I had referred to. I have to go back and look at the meeting minutes.
I'm gonna suggest then we approve the three meetings with the caveat that we'll get the adjustment or correction that you're talking about and we'll make sure we add that.
Yeah, I sent it in writing to Michelle into.
All right, so it looks like it looks like we do have that. All right, it looks like we do have that.
Did you wanna, are you able to read that Sharon, so we can at least put it in the record?
I cannot hear her well, but it had to do with the percentage. It had to be with the comment.
He said, he said, Tim, she put seven and she said it should have been seventy.
Yes, that's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, and was that the only change that you saw?
That's the only change I saw.
Okay, okay, so duly noted that instead of seven percent, it was seventy percent in the meeting on March twenty-fifth. All right, duly noted and change in the minutes.
How about if I make a motion that we approve minutes from March twenty-fifth with the change made by Selectman Lavoy, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. And the special and the regular meeting and the April second meeting, we'll can, we'll approve them as one group.
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Abstentions, passes? On the agenda, I have just one addition to the agenda. And it, it's a small one, so we, as a, as a town, have charged twenty-five dollars over the last bunch of years for return check fees. It's now been reduced to twenty dollars by legislation that the maximum allowable is so. Occasionally, when there's, when there's a change in either bank policy or legislation, we make a change, so I'm suggesting that we add that to eight D. Right after eight C, of course. Quick resolution, but if we can add to after eight C, a resolution for the fee for return checks. And that's my only change. Without change. I think we do it. We've gone back and forth, then we voted for it last time when we made the change years ago, but it's been quite a while.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, any discussions? All right, all in favor? Abstentions? May's, all right, let's move on. Great, passes. All right, um, course, communication and correspondence. I'm gonna actually save this for the general informal discussion, but I have a number of updates to pass on, so I'll wait on that. Um, all right. Monthly report Committee on Solidarity. Do we have someone online ready to go?
What about public comment?
We did, excuse me, we did, we did jump over that. Yes, any public comment? Thank you. Sorry. Not trying to rush this to better. Any public comment, anything online? Nothing online? Nothing out there? I think the, I think the.
I am paying attention.
It was all a test. It was all a test, you passed. I did not. It was from the big audience that we had. All right, now without the public comment, with no public comment necessary, uh, it is time for Committee on Solidarity. The update.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm Hope Jones. And this is our report from our April eighth meeting. We had five members present, plus the library director and one member of the public. We, uh, as correspondents and public comment, we have been offered a table at the quarry day on five thirty-one, which we will be doing. And then, uh, comment from the public when addressing diversity, equity and inclusion, it's important to remember accessibility. Now, the, uh, equity and inclusion efforts in the Portland schools and the town departments. The pending selection of two student representatives were approved by you, of course, thank you very much, and Dr. Britton, who participate in our committee. And, um, Ryan Ott, a teacher of Black and Latino Studies at Portland High School invited our committee, some representatives to give a presentation to his class in late May or June. Uh, moving on to the discussion group called the State of Black America. They've been invited interested participants to a meeting on April twenty-second at six thirty at the Portland Library. And they're still recruiting for this group through social media and the River East. For Fair Housing Month, month in April, the committee is supporting a screening of the documentary Americans with No Address, followed by a discussion. And the film will show on April twenty-eighth at the Portland Library at quarter to six. And our committee is gonna help with setup, cleanup and water, water bottles. And then for Asian American Heritage Month in May, the committee is hosting a book discussion on They Called Us Enemies by George Takei. It's, um, a graphic story of his childhood spent in American relocation centers during World War Two. And that's gonna be held at the library as well at six P M. And that book is available at the library. Our Pride work group is working on shirt designs for the Pride March in Middletown, T-shirts. And our Juneteenth work, work group, which will be, um, June fourteenth at the Portland Middle School from twelve to five, has acquired three food. Has actually booked three food trucks, including the Ice Cream Emergency, which Liberty Bank is helping with. And an American Legion group from Middletown is gonna cook hamburgers and hot dogs. And we've hired the band from last year. It's called At Last. Everybody loved them. We'll also have merchandise and informational vendors and a flag collection with Portland American Legion and Veterans Affairs Committee, because it is Flag Day. And then in the auditorium presentation to start off the day, including history, veterans' stories and singing. And we're continuing to work on promotions for the event. The Voices of Portland team is working post-production details and grant requirements. Ryan Ott at Portland High School would also like to include panelists in late May-June to speak to students in his class. And then solidarity in the community. This month's solidarity column for the River East has been sent. I, I don't know if you knew, but they've agreed to do a monthly spot for us there. And the committee discussed hosting a panel discussion to learn about the experiences of Portland residents living with and caregiving for family members with disabilities. So that's the report. If anyone has any questions or comments, jump in.
I'll, I'll, I'll jump in first. First of all, thank you very much for, for all that you guys do for the town. It's a lot of activities that you have scheduled. It gets a lot of involvement in town, and I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing. Is there anything that this board can do in terms of promotions or help with what you're doing in the next couple of months?
I don't know, I, um, I think someone may be asking if someone from the board can, um, do a presentation at Juneteenth before that.
That's always a good speaker.
And then, um, yeah, I, I think we're doing pretty well. And, you know, we'll just keep you informed, and if anything comes up, you know, Cindy or Liz or somebody will be in touch.
That'd be wonderful. Any, any other questions?
I had a question. I kinda lost track. You talked about the Middletown Pride event. And you talked about Juneteenth. When are they, like, specifically? I know they're in June, but.
Yeah, the, um, Juneteenth is, is June fourteenth. And the Pride March is the first part of June.
Do you have the date on that?
I don't have the specific date. It's probably on my phone, but I don't have my phone.
There you go.
That's all right. That's close enough.
That's great. That's great. Very good. Thank you very much, Hope, for doing that. We appreciate it. That was a nice summary. A lot of activity.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for all your help, too. We're, we're really happy to have the students coming out of work.
I, I think that's great.
Yeah, they, they'll have ideas that we wouldn't.
So, so I, I recently had a student that just graduated high school, first year of college, that wanted to intern at a local town, um, to understand politics and what happens at the municipal level. Uh, I think that's a good sign that you have students at the high school level that wanna get involved, see what's going on, are concerned about what's going on in the world or in their town. So, um, I think that's great that you're doing that and giving, giving outlet to that voice. So keep doing what you're doing.
They're very, very important voice.
Different perspective, right? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Um, all right, uh, appointments or reappoints of boards and commissions. So I spoke with you a little bit earlier today about, um, the boards and commissions. I only have three additions to add on to the existing ones. I think all of you have already spoken. You, you're either settled and, and happy with, with the boards that you're on right now. Uh, the only three additions I have, and then if anyone else, uh, if I'm missing anything, let me know, but I know, uh, Selectman Lavoy was interested in being liaison on the Economic Development Commission. That's open. I think that's great. He also was interested in the Library Board of Directors. Uh, currently, there's no liaison there, liaison there. Uh, so that's, uh, Tim is gonna step up to do that, and as well as the Senior Citizen Advisory Board. So those are the three that Tim wants to get involved with, and he'll be able to relay back to us the activities and things that they're doing at those boards for us to know and support. So is there anybody else that has a board that they're interested in or has a question?
Well, I'm sort of de facto liaison with River Access Committee. I mean, I'll keep doing that if it's okay with you.
Absolutely. We, we sort of assume.
I didn't see my name there, so I didn't know.
We need to change that right now.
I mean, I don't want Mike to come, and Jim, you're welcome to come.
All right, exclude you at their peril. So, all right, very nice. All right, so that's good. So Tim, welcome to those, uh, liaison, so.
Thank you.
You are very welcome. With regards to, um, uh, appointments for, uh, some other committees, the America Two Fifty Committee, we still have one slot open that we've saved for Board of Ed for a teacher. They have not, uh, come with, they have not come to us yet with that, and the committee's already had leave two meetings and they're going full steam ahead, which is great. I'm gonna hold it until the next meeting because of the holiday week. They just weren't, they're just not available right now. Um, I believe they said they had someone that was interested in it, but if they do not come forward with a selection by the next Board of Selectment meeting, I do have someone, uh, that is interested in that last spot. Um, and I'm gonna, and I'd like to offer that as a name in, in the next meeting, so. Um, I don't want to delay the work they're doing, and they are enthusiastically approaching this project. I could tell you that, so. Uh, but anyways, that's, that's all I have on that particular committee. All right, um, next is a new business, uh, eight A. So we, once we adopt the budget as a, as a board, uh, we then adopt the water and sewer budgets because they're separate as a board, so. Does anyone want to, first of all, I don't have any, well, actually, first we have to make.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm happy.
That's why I was looking at it. I thought you would jump right in.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, titled Adoption of the Water and Sewer Budgets for Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Six Fiscal Year, which reads as follows, resolved that the water and sewer budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six is outlined on the attached in the amount of one million nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars in the water budget and one million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars in the sewer budget, being are hereby adopted.
Do I have a second? I'll second. All right, second by Bobby. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you. We did take as much care with the water and sewer budget as we did with the rest of the budget, so I feel good about that as well. All right, we have a fair housing policy proclamation. It is Fair Housing Month, and would anyone like to read this?
I'll do it.
Thank you, John.
Fair, the Fair Housing Policy Statement. It is both the policy and strong commitment of the Town of Portland to promote fair housing opportunities in all its programs and housing development activities, and to take affirmative action through education and implementation of policies which ensure equal housing opportunity for all persons and families. The Town of Portland will take affirmative action to ensure that all tenants, applicants and residents are treated fairly without regard to their race, color, religion, age, sex, marital status, sexual orientation, national origin, ancestry, political beliefs, mental disabilities, learning disabilities, physical disabilities, including blindness, lawful source of income, or because the individual has children. The Town of Portland will continue to make a good faith effort to comply with all federal and state laws and policies which speak to fair housing practices. It's a policy of the Town of Portland that all housing-related personnel be trained and educated in the principles of fair housing and equal opportunity so that equal housing opportunity may be available to all qualified applicants. This Fair Housing Policy Statement reaffirms our commitment to the principles of fair housing and equal opportunity housing practices. The Fair Housing Officer, First Selectman Michael Pelton, or is designated representative, is responsible for the implementation of the Fair Housing Policy Statement and the enforcement of this policy. The Fair Housing Officer may be reached at eight six zero three four two six seven one five. Complaints pertaining to discrimination in any program funded by the Town of Portland may be filed with the Fair Housing Officer. The town's grievance procedure will be utilized in these cases. Complaints may also be filed with the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, Housing Discrimination Unit, four fifty Columbus Boulevard, Suite Two, Hartford, Connecticut, zero six one zero three, telephone number eight six zero five four one four three four zero three, fax number eight six oh five four one four seven zero one, or one eight hundred four seven seven five seven three seven, extension three four zero three. Re-adopted the sixteenth day of April in the year twenty twenty-five, Town of Portland, Connecticut, County of Middlesex, signed Michael A. Pelton, First Selectman.
Thank you, John. Anyone second that? Quick discussion. Housing is a huge issue, not just in our town, but in the state, in the country. Um, anything that we can do as a town to make it easier for folks to find, find housing, uh, is helpful. I take it very seriously. Uh, it's something that's a huge issue, and I thank you for the reading, and thank you for all the support that this board gives to that. All right, uh, any other comments? Call for a vote. All those in favor? Abstentions? Motion carries. Fantastic. Thank you. All right, um, refunds of excessive payments.
I'll make a motion for a refund of excess payment for Logic Centralized Refunds, two thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. Uh, four thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents and three thousand two hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
I'll second it.
So, quick discussion. I brought the backup. This is, this is a larger amount of a refund. Uh, it was an accidental overpayment from these folks. Uh, it's a real estate corporation, so, um, the documents, documentation is here if anyone wants to look at that, but they just overpaid, um, through an error, which is why the refund's going back, so.
So was it three properties?
Um, it's three properties in a consortium of, of an organization that does this, so.
Okay.
Yes. It's in the sets here, so. All right, call for the vote. All those in favor? Abstentions? Carries. Thank you very much. All right, status and committee reports.
Let's do, uh, item D.
Your added item, your, your return.
Oh, I'm so, so sorry. Thank you very much. That's two strikes. That's two strikes. I got one hit, all right? There you go. There you go. All right, so it's a quick resolution, but again, it's because the, uh, the max fee has been reduced down to twenty dollars, so. Fee for return checks, uh, Resolution Board of Selectment, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated April sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Again, fee for return checks resolved at the fee to be charged for the issuer of any check returned to the town for whatever reason be and is hereby set at twenty dollars.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the resolution as presented.
All yours, Tim.
Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Hey, hey, Michael, I have a question. The, uh, under new business, under the, uh, B, were we supposed to approve the proclamation separately, or was that part of the policy? Because you have two, there's two documents here. There's the proclamation for Fair Housing Month, and then there's the policy, Fair Housing Policy Statement.
Yeah, I read the policy statement.
So I don't know, uh, if it was a requirement, I just wanted to point out, we didn't do the proclamation.
So Bobby has suggested that we, uh, we acknowledge that proclamation. I think you're, I think you're correct, Tim. That might be the third strike. I think you're correct, Tim. It's been like this all day long, all week long, so.
Would you like me to read the other side of it, too?
I think I'd like to have you do that.
All right.
Okay.
Unless you want it, Tim.
I'm still recovering from a little illness, so I'll, I'll pass.
Okay, proclamation Fair Housing Month. Whereas April twenty twenty-five marks the fifty-seventh anniversary of Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, known as the Civil Rights Fair Housing Act. And whereas this act provides equal housing opportunity for all Americans regardless of race, color, religion, sex or national origin, as well as to ensure fair practice in the sale, rental or financing of property. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act of nineteen eighty-eight added new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and strengthened enforcement procedures. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendments Act seeks to provide equal housing opportunities to affirmatively further housing choices, to eliminate legal barriers to equal housing, and to emphasize equal housing as a fundamental human right for all. And whereas recipients of funds from the town must carry out an affirmative marketing program to attract prospective buyers or tenants of all majority and minority groups without consideration of race, color, religion, sex, disability, age, gender identity, familial status or national origin. And whereas the Town of Portland, Connecticut fully supports the intent and purpose of the Federal Housing, Fair Housing Act, local fair housing laws and follows policies and practices in order to achieve its goal. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael A. Pelton, First Selectman of the Town of Portland, Connecticut, do hereby proclaim the month, the month of April twenty twenty-five as Fair Housing Month. In witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Portland to be affixed this sixteenth day of April in the year two thousand twenty-five by Michael A. Pelton, First Selectman, Town of Portland, Connecticut, Board of Selectmen, John H. Dillon, Michael S. Hernandez, Robert W. Hedrick Jr., Edward J. Shar Jr., Timothy E. Lavoy and James K. Tripp.
All right, very nice. Do I get a second for that?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Any additional discussion? I'm going a little slower right now. Can I call for the vote? I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Number nine, status of committee reports. Anyone have any updates across the board?
I have no Board of Ed since the last meeting, so I'm good.
Yeah, just. There, there was, there was, um, I was not really able to attend the Fox and Rec. Um, so I, what I can report is I know that the quorum, uh, Tom Brandsfield went in and did present to the, to the Rec, Parks and Rec Commission, sort of the plans, that's what's going on with the park, and really talked, um, I think, you know, primarily, uh, presented the fact that I think it's May thirty-first, there's gonna be the, uh, the quorum event down there, so kind of talking about that and some of the other grant work and things that are going on. Just making sure, as we usually do, that we're aligned with what's going on with the town. Uh, Water and Sewer, I was able to get to the Water and Sewer meeting. Couple items there. One, just still in that sort of that holding pattern with, with GZA. You know, while there's work that is going on behind the scenes on items that have to, that have to take place. Uh, the big one, which is gonna be the pump-down test, obviously, we're waiting for the flooding to subside. Uh, right now, the, the water levels in the surrounding areas are still too high to, to do that, so hopefully that will, will calm down. There's discussion about COAB and the fact that the COAB project is still, um, on hold, and my understanding is that there's a push, a greater push now with Ryan will help him to understand what's going on, right? This, this is, you know, has been reported to us that it's been a materials issue. It, it's just something's not really adding up in terms of the rationale as to why this is getting delayed, so I know Ryan is pushing on, uh, pushing on them to try to get a better answer for that. The good news was no major breaks or anything in the last month, so, uh, that's always nice to see when we don't have that. The, I will say, the, um, MDC, normally, the normal pattern we see with how they manage the water facilities is that we will run a little bit heavier with water in the fall, in the back half of the calendar year. We have our fiscal year, right, that runs July one to June thirtieth for our budgetary purposes, but the MDC year, in terms of us doing our take-or-pay, runs from January one to December thirty-first. So generally speaking, we end up running the well. Uh, we run MDC a little bit heavier in the back half of the year, because you typically, that's when you hit the drought months and things like that in August. And we're trying to make sure we get a hundred and forty-six million gallons to meet, satisfy the take-or-pay. And then in the spring, when we usually have more water, we run the well a little bit more, um, and try to make sure we land the actual, make, uh, the town budget. Uh, that's been the pattern. One, what was noted is that for whatever reason, the well usage has been a little lighter, the, uh, MDC usage has been a little heavier for the first three months, so they're keeping an eye on that to make sure that we're gonna be landing things the way we need to land them. And probably the last thing I did want to put out, um, is I think we should all kind of congratulate and, uh, thanks, uh, Jim Lynch for his years of service. Yeah, he's been, uh, running the waste facility, um, down there, does it very well. He is an expert for anyone who's had the opportunity to go down and kind of take the tour and, and learn about how that facility operates. And, um, after, I, I think it's, it's thirty-four years or thirty-eight, or, or even near forty years, for a very long time, he's been running that facility and he's announced his retirement, so. I think he's given a two weeks' notice. Do you know what his last day is?
It's next week?
It's gonna be next week at this point, right? So, so just thanking him for his service, uh, and the work he's done, done, done at that facility.
We have a replacement?
These, these are all great questions that, uh, really should be delight, directed to the First Selectment. Uh, no, I mean, it's, it's relatively new news, right? So we, we know we have folks that are in place. That, and folks that have been working through the qualifications and all that. Um, I think we've got somebody who's actually gonna be either, either just sat or will be sitting the exam. Uh, so we have folks that are in the pipeline, but, uh, but I, I'm not sure exactly what the status is.
And, and Jim is willing, is willing to work with us.
Yeah.
Um, afterwards, just to make sure, because he's put a heart and soul into that over the years, so that's his plan. He knows how that runs.
High and dry.
Not gonna be high and dry. Um, we, we have a transition plan in place, so we're working on that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a very fluid situation.
I think high and dry and fluid situation are very.
That last part was unintentional, but.
So. Just don't say that the situation stinks.
Oh, no, that, that will not happen. As reserved for you. So, all right, but I, and I will keep everyone, the next couple, certainly the next four to eight weeks will be a lot of transitions, a lot of things happening, so I'll keep the board and the town very, very updated on, on what's happening and how it's going. And if I need to enlist some of the help of the folks here, I will be happy to do that.
You know, you know, we do.
Absolutely, hundred percent, so. All right, John said you don't have anything.
Nothing.
Rick, anything at your end?
You're going so fast, I can't keep up. And I missed the Water and Sewer Meeting, so I don't have anything to add to Jim's comments.
Is the sign up at the riverfront yet?
It is.
I haven't, I haven't driven by it to see if it was up.
Uh, I have a picture on my phone I can show you. Uh, I have a picture on my phone, I can show you. No, I don't think, uh, I understand you have a. Is it you have a cleanup?
We have a clean, we have a cleanup date this Friday at nine o'clock. So anyone that can come down there and wants to pick up trash behind, they'll come, I'll follow the trail all the way back, it's like nine AM. We already have the bags, we've got the gloves.
So, that's sort of what we, similar to what we did in September, when we did it with the Connecticut River Conservancy.
Yes, yes.
Are you planning to get all the way down to the?
All the way to the end, yes, we're gonna try to walk all the way to the end, because there's that pile of stuff. That's there, so, yeah, it's still there, and I know, I haven't walked the entire length of the property back there, but I know there's a lot, so.
Um. I don't know if you want to do this in general discussion, but we should talk about the logistics of getting in there.
Yes.
Because it's kind of a jungle.
Absolutely.
If we're gonna just go in from behind Tilcon, it's, it's a long.
It's a long way out.
Yeah.
We're gonna.
Get in, Meriden Boat Club, that's what we get in the fall.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if you can get closer to the, where most of that junk is.
You know, it might be good as we meet, that, we're meeting at nine o'clock, and we, we, we meet and plan how we're gonna do that. Uh, but we should, we should talk, we'll talk before then.
Okay, I, there's, I know somebody, um, I think it's Rosa Letta, and who has to, has led us in.
Okay.
To the boat, Meriden Boat, Meriden.
Okay.
I don't know if she's still an officer there.
I, I can reach out to her too.
Yeah, so. Alright.
Yeah, or, or if you, if you talk to them, that'd be great.
Alright, we'll talk after.
Okay.
About that. That's nine AM on.
Nine AM this Friday, it's gonna be a good Friday.
And you're on my calendar.
Unfortunately, it is still a workday, I love the day.
There you go.
I did notice, um. Norm Needleman wrote an article, there was a set. Blurb from Norm in the River East about how he, um, got money for. Various coastal towns, river towns for their, for their docks and.
Yes.
Ports, and, um. I don't know, I was thinking of sending him a, no, nice job, Norm, but don't forget. We're, we're gonna have a spot on the river soon.
Absolutely, absolutely, I know, I saw that too, and he listens to bunches in his town right around there, so, yeah.
Yeah. So, um, no, I think. What you have coming up, and I don't know if you want to talk about, well, uh. The, um, the easement adjustment or correction is being, um, gonna be signed off by Tilcon. That's all set to go. And, um, I think we're waiting for Jeff Jacobson to, um. Come back with the final plans, so we can submit to inland wetlands.
Yeah, and I think we already have, um, a meeting scheduled for the first. Meeting in May, we already talked to Dan and what's gonna happen with that, so I think, I think it's, and again, I'll, I'll go offline and, and, and confirm everything with you, but they already had that scheduled.
Okay.
And, and Jeff knows, Jeff Jacobson knows, he needs to get that done by then, so he's actively working to get that.
Alright.
So.
Um. Yeah, so it, uh, anyway, the, the, the River Access Project is finally starting to move forward and. That might be, we might be able to actually start doing some construction down there this summer.
Yeah, be great, so, I know, Mike, Michael Stream has got, uh, I think all the utility needs down there in order to build that road.
How long, how long is the road from?
It felt like a good half mile to get back there, maybe it wasn't.
Well, I don't think it's that long, I mean. But I guess if you count from the ball field. All the way down, maybe. Maybe a, a, a good quarter mile.
Yeah, yeah.
But once you get behind Tilcon. It's. I don't know. Two, three hundred yards, okay, yeah, so it's, it's half again, it's not as high, it cuts it in half.
Yep.
That's why we were pushing so hard to be able to get some parking down near the river.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be good when it's done.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe by the end of the year, maybe by the end of the year.
I'd like to be able to, yeah, but, we'll put our kayaks.
I got a kayak looking to get wet.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go, so that's great, thank you, Rick. Have anything at your? Okay, gotcha, so just quick, uh, quick updates, so Nordic Spa. Last time I spoke, um, I was, I was hoping that they would already be, uh, digging. And getting some of the funda, not the foundation work, but the groundwork done, uh, they have not done that yet. Um, part of the issue was firming up a, uh, GMP, a guaranteed max pricing for their new contractor that's gonna be doing the work there. Uh, they, uh, are signing that early next week, uh, they should be starting in mid-May, uh, which is four weeks from now. Um, they have that locked in, they also need to do something with Eversource that was dragging up, they were able to get that resolved, uh, this last week. So those two issues are the only things that were holding that up, so, um, I will keep everyone posted as to when they walk in and do the first. Actual work in that project, but right now it's middle of May and that seems solid. Um, and again, they're still expecting sixteen to eighteen months of construction time, so you're looking at the end of next year. Um, at the end of next year is, is what they're looking at, is a soft opening, so, so that's coming along. Uh, they've already paid all their fees and whatnot, uh, permit costs are ready, so it's just a matter of getting the contractor, which they already have selected. Uh, just locked into what they have, so, uh, that is the Nordic Spa. Um, Farmers Markets, I don't know if anyone's seen, uh, some of the, uh, some of Facebook and some of the, uh. Um, uh, some of the, uh, Facebook messages out there, we, uh, it, it's a project that I've wanted to get started for a while. Uh, we have a group that got together about two weeks ago, um, and it was sixteen to eighteen people in town that came together for their first meeting. Um, there's a couple people that are running and headlining it, but it was fantastic to see. Um, artisans, uh, farmers, et cetera, a lot of energy, uh, they're putting together the plan right now, they're gonna set up their. Five oh one three C and go through all the paperwork, uh, in order to get it set up and, and, and go to town, but. Uh, a lot of excitement, a lot of people in town are jumping on it, um, I'll keep everyone posted on what happens with that, but, um, that's part of the whole. Let's give people a reason to come to Portland and stay here, so I think that fits in very nicely, and they have some big plans, and again, I will keep everyone posted.
For this year?
This year, yeah, they want.
Where do they plan on putting the market?
That's what they're looking at right now, um, they've looked at where they've put him before in the past. Um, I know it's been sometimes, uh, near the police station, you know, kind of in our, our little town center, they've done it there before. They've had success in the past with that, um. But they're looking at it right now, that's actively, they're actively looking at, when the next meeting happens, I will inform the board, so if you want to go there and. And, and hear what's happening, I think it's worthwhile, um, I will be there for the next one as well, and I'll keep everyone posted on it. But that's an exciting time, that one, um, I think that's gonna go some places, so, uh, and it's been at least. Seven, eight years since we've had that, from what I've been told, it's been quite a while since we've had that, but when they did run, um, i- it, they, they ran quite well, so. I think that's important as well, so that is going there, uh, grand opening, bring the place, they are doing the official grand opening celebration on. Tuesday, April twenty ninth, um, three to five is the event, so it's open to anyone, uh, from town that wants to go, that they'll have. Activities, free samples, face painting, a bunch of things, raffles and more, uh, four o'clock, I believe, is when the official. Ribbon cutting will be, so all the members here are invited, please attend if you can, uh, that'll be four o'clock. For the coffee house.
And that's April twenty nine?
April twenty ninth, it's three to five for the event, uh, but four o'clock will be the ribbon cutting ceremony, so please come. And wear your Sunday best if you can, so that will be there. We've already talked about the River Access Project, but that is real exciting, um. We may have access by the end of the year there, uh, and for those that don't remember, we, we have three hundred thousand dollars that, um, we were able to get for this project. Uh, and we're ready to spend some money to get it done, so, uh, that is exciting. Um. I was approached over the last couple weeks about charging stations for the town. We've talked about that, um, a couple years ago, I think all the members of the board were here when we talked about that. Uh, with the activity going on right now with Brainerd Place, who has several charging stations built into the first building, it's gonna be in the second building as well. Um, I think there's time for another discussion about that, um, especially as the spa comes online and everything, so. Uh, it's not yet, not ready yet for tonight, of course, but I want to put it across the bow with everyone that. I'd like to bring that up either the next meeting or the meeting after, I'll be gathering up some information, I may ask a couple speakers to come in and talk about that, Andy and a few others.
Well, the last time we had a presentation, Andy did a good job.
Did a wonderful job, um, but I think with the activity going on, I think it's time to revisit that, I think we had kind of left it as. We're not sure what's going on in town, we're not sure where we would place them, but with Eversource building up the capacity to provide power to Eversource. Or to, uh, the Brainerd Place and to the spa. I think, I think the ability for Eversource to be able to support that is now available, whereas it wasn't really a couple years ago, so I just want to kind of throw that out there.
Brainerd required to have any in with the state law?
I don't know, I don't know if they're required, I know they're putting them in, that may be because of.
Putting them in their buildings for their tenants.
For their tenants.
What are they, put them in the parking lot for the general public?
I don't know, I don't, I believe based on the permit they have, they were required to based on what the state law was at the time, but I don't know.
Required to, unless you do some. Program through Eversource, um.
The new state law says new development is required to based on how many parking spaces you have.
Right.
But they put in for their permit.
Before.
Before it was a law.
That's what I'm saying, so.
Okay. So they may not.
I'm going by, yeah. But they're also pulling. Other permits as they go along, so I don't know if.
For the retail.
The law applies to them for their future buildings.
From my understanding, the permit that they did for the whole project covers them on the whole project.
But they didn't pay for the permit for the whole project.
That is correct.
I was gonna say, the permitting that they've done is, it's been. By building, so.
Right.
When they start looking at the buildings, for the retail side, my guess is that they.
Probably will have.
If, if they may fall into that, we should, we should look into.
I will absolutely look into that, uh, but, and that'll be part of the research before we start talking about this, but yes, absolutely, and again, I know. Uh, the spa has already talked to Eversource, uh, as, I think almost a year ago, uh, in terms of, so Eversource has been. Very aware of what they're doing, so I don't know what their situation is with them as well, or if they're interested, but that'll be part of the discussion, but. I think it's worthwhile looking at what, what public space is in town.
As, as we're talking about, I think I remember. When we had the last discussion, one of the options was potentially in the parking lot right over next to this building.
Mm-hmm.
Because we thought at that point, the police might be able to, and town vehicles maybe have, have access, we went that way too. But this may be one of the ways.
Yeah, there was, there was sort of a circle, right, to the downtown area, because of all the funding and all that works, so.
Well, and with the uptake of, you know, more people are driving those cars, more people are aware of it, they have a number of apps. And they're not all connected together right now, but there's probably a half a dozen different apps where you can look on a particular app and see where the charges that you are. They're all not communicating with each other yet, because it's still early adoption, well, not as early adoption, but, uh, but. Once that's in place and you can just look on one place and find it, so I think it's important that we at least look at this, so I think the time's right for us to reexamine.
Now, would these be? Where the people using them have to put their credit card in or somehow pay for?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
But the initial price was very expensive, that's why we didn't move forward.
Hmm, right.
Very expensive.
Yeah, and, and there's three different charges, there's the one that you have at your house, which takes all night to get a charge, there's. There's the intermediate one, which can charge in a forty-five minute to an hour period, so there's different levels of charging.
Yeah, there's the one, two, and three, I think.
Yeah, and.
Three is, like, that twenty minute.
Twenty minute, you go there, you grab a coffee and it's ready.
I think that's why when we have this discussion, Andy's gotta be here, because that's.
Hundred percent.
He'll be able to explain that.
I've already spoken to Andy about this or whatever, so I gave him the heads up, but yes, uh, and there's other people out there that do it, so I think it'll be good to see.
Yeah, there's a fair amount of competition.
Yeah, but I think the more we know, the better off we are, but I think it's worthwhile, so, so do your homework, come up with some questions and.
I will tell you, a guy approached me about my commercial property. Um. I, I have the information, it's like last month, and they have a program where you just sign a lease with them. And they do all the setup, they. They charge the.
It's like a cell phone tower, they just want your space.
They want your space, and they give you, you don't make as much, but, but you start making from day one. Right, you have no cost.
And if you want, and if you want to be on that map of towns that have those.
Right, that might be a way to go, as a matter of fact, I can give, I'll get you contact. He's here in Connecticut, down in Battle Sam.
That's great, that's great, yeah, I mean, I think especially, it's getting a critical mass right now, where things like that are making sense, it gives us more options. So, no, I agree, so that's great, so yeah, everyone kind of keep your eyes open, bring it to us, um, I don't know if it's gonna be in the next meeting or the one after. Um, I prefer to have everyone here, um, so, um, but we'll, we'll talk about that, I'll let you guys know about it ahead of time. Alright, uh, just a couple more things, um, so. I have it here, I do, so before, since the last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Fireman's Annual. Um, annual, I guess, meeting convention, that's not it, uh, banquet, thank you.
Banquet.
On banquet, um, and.
Saturday night or something.
Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, it was, um, it was Saturday, I believe, um, but it was, um. It, they did a great job, uh, Chief Poyet did a fantastic job, he emceed it, um, it was awards to a number of firefighters who had served for. You know, ten years, twenty years, forty years, you know, forty-five years, I think was the longest, um, but. But just the camaraderie there was great to see, it's the first one in the time I've been here that I've attended. Um, I've never felt that, I didn't want to interfere with it, even in the time on the Board of Selectmen, I didn't feel it was, it, it was appropriate for me to be there, it was, it was. Kind of a band of brothers and sisters there, but it was really good, but they also, um, honored, uh, honored Sean during that time with a commemorative coin. Uh, that they provided to all the attendees, um, I, uh, we, we did have a couple extras for their family that was given to the family, but. Um, it was a very moving, um, time when they were talking about everything that happened and. And memories about Sean and the whole bit, but I thought that was, um, a real, it was a wonderful touch to it. Um, and it was, but, uh, it was, it was wonderful to be there, and, and I appreciated the time and, um. They, they do so much in the town, they don't do it for the money, they certainly don't do it for the money, so.
And, and if they didn't do it, we'd be in big trouble.
We'd be in big trouble, yeah, so I thought that was, I, I was, I was, I felt privileged to be there. Yeah, we'd get one, right, so, um. That is it, about a, another, about a week and a half ago, I had a chance to, uh, get interviewed, um, on, uh, was it Dennis House's show or whatever? Um, and we talked about Portland, we had about seven or eight minutes to talk about things in Portland, and I'm only bringing this up because it was, it was interesting, I, I threw out there. That, um, that Portland, you know, we, we do a lot of golf here in town. And I, I, I made the comment that we are the unofficial golf capital of Connecticut, because we have three courses, we have two driving ranges. We've got Chris and, and his shop in town, we do a lot of stuff, but I was.
And how many state championship golf teams?
Only six, only six years that we've won that, right? Eight champs is, so, we have, we, we, we have that street cred, we've checked all the boxes. And I think it's great, and I, I think that's wonderful, it's only gonna get better, we also have an, a tired miniature golf course with the dot, with the T-rex missing ahead.
Yeah.
That's also in town, that, that's coming back, someone wants to do something with that, so, that, that's gonna come back as well. Um, but I was reminded that we also are a town of marinas. And on the eight miles of seacoast or river coast that we have, uh, we are also a town that has five marinas, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, and we have another one right on the border, the Glastonbury Marina, uh, that makes it almost five and a half, right, with their six. So, we, we have a lot of water activities, we have a lot of, um, entertainment activity, we have a lot of golf activities. Portland is a great town, and we have a lot of things to be proud of this town, but again, I was reminded from all the boaters that, you know, we've got golf. But we sure got boating here too, and with the access to the river, uh, it's that.
And hopefully we'll have public access soon.
Yes, absolutely, so I wanted to put that out there too, put that out there too, um, that's all I had. Anyone else have anything else?
When, I just saw that flyer in front of you, when is that again?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you say it.
Oh, you're gonna let me do it?
Yes, absolutely.
Join us for a celebration, Ruth Mayo has retired. Ruth has retired as director of the food bank, we want to celebrate her longtime dedication. April twenty seventh, from one to three PM at St. Mary's Church, I should have known that.
Yes, absolutely, please come.
She's an amazing lady, done a lot, not just the food bank, but visiting nurse before that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Please do, alright, um, last, last thing, we went through a budget season, we came to a budget, we put it out there. I have not heard much out there, and I've been told that no noise is, is good, you know, no, no issues is good, I'm hoping that's the case. Um, I, um, there should be a note for me in this week's referees. Encouraging people if they have questions about the budget, if they want to know about their situation, whatever the case is, is to reach out, so I encourage all of us here. To get the word out, they have questions about the budget, they want to know what process we went through, I want this as transparent as possible. Um, I think it's a good budget, I'm looking at towns around us, and, uh, and most, if not all, are, have a higher increase. Um, I think we've done a good job, I feel good about, it's not perfect, um, but I think we're able to put together one that I feel good about. And I'm willing to, you know, really stand behind.
I can make a suggestion.
Yes.
I know you periodically have little snippets in the River East.
Yes.
I suggest, when you put in one of those articles, you give the folks the link, the date. And the time, so they can watch the video of some of our, of our Youtubes.
So I would, so I, I think that's a great idea, and I will do that, um one of the things I wanted to do, and. Selectmen wanna help out on this as well, is I'm gonna do a kind of a video, uh as Ryan, and I think Susan had done some as well. Explaining the budget for those that wanna just watch it, either I do it on, on my, my, my Facebook set for Selectmen page, but get it out there. Um so I can explain to people who wanna know, uh maybe over the next, just because we have the, the uh, the, the meeting is May fifth. Monday night, uh uh it's gonna be six P M, I'm sorry, seven P M at the middle school cafeteria, so those people that wanna know more about. They're welcome to come, I will be uh putting that everywhere if I can, um but between then and the week after. Um when we have the referendum, it's up on the twelfth, um I want to, you know, maybe. They wanna, if they wanna meet down at the restaurant, right, they wanna talk about it, maybe do a quick tour out there, but I encourage everyone here, if they can get the word out as well. Um I'll do everything I can to educate people on the budget and why the numbers are, or if you get questions, please relay it back to me, and I'll make sure I get the answers to those questions out there. So.
Have you had any questions on the other item we voted on, the change to the vehicle?
No, surprisingly, no, I've, I've, people have asked me general questions about the budget, and I've told them. One of the things we did that allowed us to keep the mill rate down to one point oh, was adopting the local option, and most people didn't know what that meant. And as I explained it, when we had, I said it basically shifted some from the homes. Spread out to the three times as many cars that we had, and because of the way it works, and because of the depreciation. Was significant over the year before to now, uh most people still saw a decrease in their car taxes, so um. So it ended up being a positive, but I've had very little feedback from people, um some positive, most neutral, and just wondering. You know, how it was done and, and what it was, so. Anyways, but yeah, that, that's been my experience, anybody else had any different experience at all or? That's maybe a good sign, so anyways, all right, that is all that I have. Right, are we ready to wrap this up?
Any public comment?
Yes, any public comment online? Any, anyone out there? All right. Um informal discussion, we've already gone through that. All right.
I just, I just have two things for the informal discussion. Um I wanted to bring it up, we can talk about it at the next meeting, as we talked about it before, was the food recycle program at the transfer station.
Yes.
If we still wanna go on with that. Um we're currently paying three times the rate of what we do for bulky waste for that program.
Yeah.
Um and the other thing I have. Um it'll involve uh Mike Lastrina as the Public Works Director, we need to look into. Crack seal at the high school and middle school complex.
Got it.
That parking lot is starting to be in horrible condition. And the price I was given last was to mill it and repave it is one point two million dollars. So, we need to start doing some work to it before we get to that bill of one point two million dollars that we can't afford.
That has, that has been discussed in the building group, and I know that that's been discussed in two different ways. One would be just putting a, a seal type material on it, and the other would be to pave it new, and the, the new pavement, you're absolutely right, is. Extremely expensive.
Yeah, because they're, they're talking one point two million for that, the tennis courts, they were saying with one point one million. And we need to do something to preserve the parking lot as long as we can. If we can get away with, you know, whatever the number is, thirty, forty thousand dollars to. Seal the cracks this year, and then chip seal it or something else next year, hold this over, we. We can't let it fall apart, we need this, and this is what happened with the track. We just kept pushing it down the road and pushing it down the road, till it got to the point that you had to replace it. We can't replace that parking lot.
Preventive maintenance, right?
Yeah.
You know, um. Shopping centers like Portland Plaza and my center in Colchester, we crack seal every year.
Really?
Yep, and just stay up on it, and it's not that expensive if you do it every year.
Exactly, but it, it comes down to with that, it's who's paying for it? The Board of Ed, or are we paying for it? We both should be paying for it, whatever it is, but. We can't keep putting it off, and it's, I haven't even looked at the other schools, I was just up there for a baseball game today. And it's horrible.
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll talk with Mike tomorrow, I'll let you know, but that, I, I agree with you, we have to.
And, and touch base, I know um Bob Shay, in the, the committee discussions has. Some fairly reasonable and new numbers on that, so you can.
Be, because when they did it, they did the larger cracks a few years ago. Uh from Bob Shay's maintenance budget, they paid for the material. And then the Public Works crew went up there and it was them that did it, so.
They split the cost.
Yeah.
Time watch, yeah.
Yeah, but so maybe the two guys need to get together on that.
Yeah, I mean, they're smart, they've done this before, we gotta get on it, so that's great.
Thanks for those two points.
That was good.
Um what's that? You mentioned a food recycle program.
You can take, what, they take the scrap and waste food from the homes.
Yeah.
And at the entrance of the transfer station, there's two cans outside, I believe they come and empty it weekly. And they'll give us a total of what they take away. But with what they're taking away and what they charge us, it comes out to be three times what we pay to get rid of bulky waste.
Okay, if. Oh, just so I understand it, if we collected enough food scraps.
Mm-hmm.
Then might it be pro- profitable?
No, it's no profit, because it's free, we keep, we pay, I think it's.
Oh, the company hauling it doesn't.
No.
Oh, we approached it as kind of like. Offering it to town citizens as an environmental thing to do, but even at the time, we said, let's give it some time and see what it costs.
Yeah, I think we're a year and a half or almost two years into it now. And Ryan O'Halpin did the numbers, and for the weight that they pick up and take away compared to what we pay. It's over three hundred dollars a ton that we're paying them to take it away.
Yeah.
And it's just over a hundred dollars a ton for us to get rid of garbage. So it's three times the cost.
What are they doing with this when they take it away?
I don't know if it goes to one of the.
One of the bio.
I think it was a bio situation, they make, they make.
The digesters.
But I mean, it was, it was something we wanted to try, it was the environmentally friendly thing to do, but we also kind of. Hedged our bets, we wanna see what the costs were gonna be, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, we're just not, that's it, in town, we're looking at the bills.
Yeah.
I mean, not everybody can do it, but if you kind of live in the country or have an acre or so, I mean, we just compost our.
I think roughly, we're over, it's just over three thousand dollars a year that we're paying.
Yeah.
It's like two sixty, two seventy a month, something like that.
It adds up too.
But there's not enough. In my opinion, there's not enough going into it to justify what we're paying for.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So.
Alright, good points, these, these small things add up.
Yeah.
They add up quick, so.
Well, I was gonna say, too, like, you know, we came out of the budget season with not. With only one mill increase or under three percent, but I think our spending side was like. What, four and a half?
Four point seven, I think.
Four point seven, I mean, we were fortunate that. Our revenue increased, but, yeah, we gotta be careful, because. You can't sustain. Those kind of increases.
Four point, four point. Four to bed.
Well, obviously, our, our revenue side increased. Enough to effectively, effectively have a lower.
You know.
Only a, only a three percent increase, but. Yeah, so I mean.
Yeah.
No, I think we did okay, but I think we can't keep in place.
No, no, I agree, I mean, I, I personally think maybe we could even done better, but. Yeah.
But anyway, we. We came to an agreement, and um now we gotta go forward.
And, and.
And make it work.
Well, and not only that, though, I think even what Bobby said, like, there's things as we go forward that we don't have to spend. All the money in the bucket, so we may be able to find ways as we're going to minimize.
Like on the water.
On the water, right.
There was, you know, that may not all get, have to get spent.
Right, yeah, I mean, I think it's good that we had the numbers in there from a contingency standpoint, but.
Right.
We need to be careful how we spend that, um. And septic, right, it maybe once you get the flow up at that end, we might be able to use that as additional revenue or whatever, so. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, a lot of things can happen, but we have, we can't, we can't. Yeah, I guess ease back, you know, we gotta, every, every week, we gotta look at the numbers.
Yeah, I mean, it was very heartening when all the various town. Um department heads came forward and.
Yeah, yeah, I thought that was great.
And some, so they, if nothing else, it was, everybody was aware of, you know, we gotta count every. Every penny or every dollar.
I, I think we were lucky too, if you could, if you listened really quietly about a week ago, you could hear the screaming and yelling over in Middletown. When they had their town meeting about the budget, there was a lot of, a lot of upset people about two and a half mils or whatever the increase was over there, so. So like I said, I think we were civil and.
Well, also, you wanna put a budget out there that it's gonna pass on the first.
Yeah.
Crack, so we're not doing this over again in May and June and.
Yeah.
Um do we, or has even gone out the bid yet for the Main Street sidewalks or Highland Avenue sidewalks? Has that contract gone out yet?
It has, it has, um I know I talked to your brother today, um he had to stop by a house and. Do something there for part of the, you know, engineering that they had to figure out, so yes. So. And, and, and we still haven't heard yet from the, the biggest, the uh, the, the second stage. Where we put the two hundred thousand dollars up, with a million dollars to finish um High Street. The uh, the, they were gonna announce it as early as the seventh of April, but they pushed that back, they haven't made any decision yet, so. We still feel pretty good about that, I'm hoping that's a good sign, um because we have a number of things that go in our favor, but that has not been, they have not issued that out yet. So as soon as that happens, we also be the second one to know.
Um with the sidewalks, I know we were saying with Main Street, there's gonna be. Enough to complete the Indian Hills, we're gonna start down and this side of Main Street in downtown. One small piece I would like to see us address.
Yes.
And I walked it with John, is the end of Waverly Avenue, when you cross East Main Street.
Yes.
It's only a hundred and fifty feet, it's like three houses are.
Waverly Extension?
Waverly Extension, yeah.
Yeah.
Um and one way to save money, there's sidewalks on both sides of the street, you just do one. There only should be sidewalks on one side of the street, but the sidewalk on one side of the street is unwalkable.
Okay.
It is.
And I know.
Highlighted with paint to let you know at night.
My neighbor and I know she spoke with, she spoke with, with town officials.
That's true, okay.
Numerous times, it's, I mean, they're craters.
Yes, they're three, four inches deep, and they're a foot wide.
It's a purse house right on the corner of, next door to me.
But like we said, there's only, you know, it's three houses on each side of the street, so. I don't see the point of having a sidewalk on both sides, but to have a walkable sidewalk would be nice.
And actually, the one on the other side isn't, isn't nearly as bad as the one you're talking.
Yes.
Okay, and it's, and it's basically, it's a dead end, it's not a through.
No, right. And like I said, that's something for, for Public Works to say, this is where the sewer line is, this is where the water line is, and that'll. Determine which side do you leave the sidewalk on.
And I, and I will tell you too, because I mean, we talked about a lot of these, initially, these grants were for, for accessibility to schools.
Mm-hmm.
That, there are young kids on that street, but that's also a bus stop at that corner.
Right.
So you don't want any of those kids goofing around before the bus comes and taking a header on that sidewalk.
Well, and I can also tell you, because when we were evaluating as part of the sidewalk subcommittee, you know, several years ago. This was one of those that we said, okay, you know, the goal was trying to get large segments done in one. Shot, right, to maximize the money, but we always knew we were gonna have to look at, at detailing one of these projects, say, okay, we need to find that hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what we talked about, really, it should go down to one side.
Yeah.
Um it's, it's the right, it's the right way for us to go.
I agree, I'll, I'll start working.
A few weeks ago, when you saw me and John walking, that's what we were doing.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we walked up East Main Street, we walked Highland, we went to Spring Street, we walked all that, we were looking at stuff.
Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I was depressed.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that, like, when they do Highland, like, there's a, a big tree that should be taken down.
Yeah.
Because it's destroyed the sidewalk on the corner, and there's another one, there's an old stump that's gotta be. Four feet in diameter that did the same thing, I just don't wanna see them put a new sidewalk behind those two obstacles. And be like, there, your sidewalk's not.
Okay, there you go.
And the other thing, as we're talking about it on East Main Street, because Spring Street was recently done.
Right.
And the intersection of Fairview and East Main was done with, in the early going of the project.
Yes.
So you have little stretches of new sidewalk coming in from either angle on that stretch of East Main Street.
Right.
But then in the middle.
Nothing, nothing.
Okay, got it.
See if you can work some miracles and get it all done.
But I, I think Waverly is the worst at the end.
That, yeah, that's, that's.
It's, it's not a huge overpowering project.
Yeah, yeah. And I know a couple. Likely to get hurt.
Yeah, right, and those kids will, they were there at the bus stop there every day.
Got you. No, it's, it's time, we've done all, we've done all of the surrounding things, it's, it's time to.
Absolutely, absolutely, and, and just, just a small thing too, things like that, they're, they're, they're small, but they're a big deal to the people there. Um I, I gotta, I have a couple complaints from people, even on. From where Duncan Donuts is running back to where Zaz is, just that part of the sidewalks or whatever, always has rocks in it, kinda messy. And I know we used to clean the sidewalks up, so a couple of people love it, so you know, um you know, can, can the town do something about that, so we're cleaning that up.
We asked that last year, because we were saying if it could be. Initially, years ago, I don't know, five, six years ago, maybe more.
Yeah.
We had grant money, no, but we had grant money to do that.
Right.
And the Public Works was doing like from the post office to the bridge.
Right.
I think it was once a month.
Right.
They'd clean the parking spaces, blow off the sidewalks, and then come through and sweep it all, but, and I said, that's something we need to start doing. I mean, Middletown does it, I think it's weekly or bi-weekly.
And it looks great though.
If we could just do it quarterly, it would be nice to clean up Main Street.
So I'm, I'm happy to announce that I talked to Mike today, and he's doing that, you know, with, with the next couple of days, and we'll get it regular team, because. First thing you see in, uh, when you come into Portland, is kind of messy street, messy side, whatever, so, oh, one other thing. It's ha, it has to do with coming into Portland, um I was talking to, and it's a shout out to Chris Cody, just because I appreciate it, he probably doesn't even want this. But um I met with him a couple of days ago, and he had uh done all of the flower work around the original Welcome to Portland sign that we had.
For a long time.
Right, he did that. Yeah, right, right, so he did that, and then I think we tore it all up for somebody, the triangle, because the triangle is a lot smaller, right, that was it.
Yeah.
I, I don't recall why it was, but I knew that, so, so when I met with him, he said he is happy to. Uh to do with the new location, is when you come over the bridge on the right side.
With the welcome signs.
Welcome, he said he will carve out an area and doing that, and I thank him for his willingness to do that, and. He's gonna start working that whenever the weather gets out, but um, but I appreciate, and it's that kind of thing with business people in town. Wanting to do a diff, wanting to make a difference, and again, it's the first thing you see when you get into town, the last thing that comes out, so those small things are big things, and. It may cost them a couple thousand dollars to do, but it's a huge impact, right, it's a huge impact, so.
I think he probably figures indirectly. Positive effect on his business.
A hundred percent, yeah, well, and listen, his business is making perfectly manicured lawns, so you can golf on and putt on.
Yeah.
So his idea of perfect, it might be a little bit more precise than art, but, but that's good though, so anyways, I appreciate. Because if you're watching, I appreciate what you're doing for the town, but that was something I, I really thought was great, and all these small things, so if you see things like this.
Is he, is he gonna add a little sign that says Welcome to the Golf Capital?
Don't tempt them.
So, so you know what, it says Come on Over, I'm gonna add a sign that says to golf. Yeah, on the big side, we'll light it up, so.
Yeah, that's very nice.
I, I know, when, when I, when I start, my wheels start turning, I end up putting something I wouldn't wanna do, but. You're talking about Chris doing that, and I'm sure there's other areas in town where maybe other businesses might wanna do something similar. But you ever go to, you go down certain streets or highways, and you have the signs along the way.
Right.
That like it's maintained by this business and maintained by that business, I wonder if that's something we wanna look into.
I think we should ask with Birdon and with Raynard and with other places.
And, and, and that might actually um get more businesses interested in, in taking on a little section somewhere.
As long as it might be an E D C thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, talk about.
But I think that, you know, it doesn't have to be a huge sign, but just something.
Just something that says, you know.
Thanks to.
Maintained by Chris Cody's Golf Shop.
Right, right.
Something like that.
And you get some advertising.
Hundred percent, and it's good for the town, and I gotta tell you, those small things add up, and, and it makes a huge difference.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because if I recall, originally, that triangle, I believe, was done by Pine Ledge.
Because if I recall, originally that triangle, I believe, was done by Pine Ledge. And they had a sign in there that said that. So it's, I think that's a, it's a really good thing for us to do. Yeah, because I I just, but but I, but now I drive around town. I'm not sure if you do the same thing. I drive around town and I see mess everywhere. Right? Like just because I'm looking for it now.
Well, it's a happy time of the year.
Hundred percent, hundred percent, but but now I can't help but see it, right?
Maybe you can find out, just people have been asking, the old ankles in McCoy.
Yes.
They sold out, the building was empty for a while. Company came in, did a lot of work in the region. Now it's empty again. What is their plans with that building and what they're going to do?
I was gonna say, that was the the work that was being done there, that was, um, but all the fiber work that was getting done from telecom, they was, that company was staging.
Yeah.
To do that. And I, that works now. Those deployments are done.
That's a, that's a large piece of commercial property in six.
Oh, yeah. I'm trying to get as much of an update as I can, but that's, that's what you, that's what you're aware of. Oh, yeah. No, no, absolutely. I could see the fiber reels in there and I could see the.
So what's the name of the company? Something mass. Mastek.
That was Mastek. I believe it was in there. They've done work, they've done work for the company that I work for, um, as part of it. They 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 do work for other. Um, you know, you know, the C, you know, C A T V providers, et cetera, but but that was part of that fiber deployment. And I I think specifically they were doing, because it was actually, we, it was a different, we used a different vendor in Portland. We did a very nice job, but I believe they may have been doing some work in East Hampton and they were basing around there with all the fiber and such.
Mike, I got something. Just I forgot. To ask you about or mention. Mike Lastrina called me about a week ago. About, um. He's got a group, I think it was the V F W.
Oh, yes. Yes, that they need to get some hours in before. May was it or end of?
Yeah, like they want to do some community service work. So he was asking me about. The Riverfront Park. And, um, they wanted to, uh, they want to do this work on May third. I think it's a Saturday. And I mentioned, well, if we. If we're cleared or we can get down to the riverfront area, that's a possibility or I chucked with Lou Pear. Who happens to be away, but we could touch base with Riz. There's some work too on the airline trail where they want to. Spread some, um. Road tailings, they've been, they've been filling in that section kind of near your house from. The parking area up to the trail. And we did some work there last summer, but we didn't complete it. So we need to. I guess we need to decide. I need your help to decide like how to direct.
Okay.
Mike and where we want to.
Okay. Yeah, I've got that Saturday, that, uh, May third.
I mean, I told Mike if if it ended up, well, either. Either site, I would help them arrange and if it was Riverfront, I'd go down there. That's why I was hoping that. Maybe we had it remarked, but we'll get a better look Friday to see if we can.
Yeah.
Figure out where the path is supposed to go. I mean, if they want to go down there and just knock down some brush, I mean, it's not going to hurt anything. It's. I hope in the long run.
And honestly, I think we're probably a week away from having the markets done because they were pretty close to it. Um, there wasn't a whole bunch left, so I'll I'll reach out to Jeff again, but I I'm thinking next week, like we may get them, the markets.
We have two weeks. Till May third and then.
Yeah, I think May third is a safe week, but I, if I can get it sooner.
Okay, so the, uh, I'll just tell everybody about that. And Mike, Mike was. I don't know if he's member or is working with that group.
I'm not sure, but he's connected with them. So, no, that's great. I'll I'll find out. Is that now all? We almost made it to nine o'clock. We got fifteen.
We got some good stuff that came up. The way you were going, I thought we were going to be out at seven forty five.
That was great. Uh, all right. So I think we are all set. Follow up items, ethics ordinance and review town charter. Um, not something I'm ready to look at right now.
I think if the. After the budget referendum, we talk about the town charter.
Okay.
We've been talking about that for four years.
Oh, that was even back even more than four years.
That's the thing. I think the last update is two thousand and fourth, so we're twenty one years since.
And it really, it's just, it's a matter of just trying to kick off the charter review committee again. And that's going to take some time anyway. We all know that.
Well, I I have a suggestion with that because we've all got a town charter, right? Uh, what I would suggest is maybe we, as of say June, our first meeting in June. Um, by then, could everyone please go through the charter that they have, mark up questions they have, suggestions, and let's have a discussion about that. Um, either at the next meeting or executive session, whatever, whatever we need to.
We talked about that before because then we can give them a direction to go. Of look at these specific areas.
You can't just hand them a chart and say, go to it.
No, no, and 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 it's, it's, it's a waste of time to talk about them, but I think we all look at it. We did just it. I've been, I've looked through it all over the last three or four months for a variety of reasons. So I have a much better handle on it now than I did before to just as, so. That I think would be really good. So let's, let's go for June, the first, the first D O S meeting in June. Between now and then, if you need another one, but mark it up, uh, put suggestions down. It should.
Yeah. It's under the town clerk.
Yep. So, and I have a funny feeling, my prediction is that we're going to find eighty percent of what we find will be the same thing. Because a lot of it's pretty straightforward, but there's some stuff, um, that I think we'll all agree needs to be changed and modified. So. Uh, it may be, it may be easier than we think, but let's just do that. So we we'll go with that. Yeah, Tim, you're good with that too?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Okay, that's a great idea. All right. Are we really, really done now?
I'll make a motion to re-charge. Yeah, that'll end it. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? It passes. Good night, everybody.